All right, thank you so much for being here this evening. Today is Monday, May 16th, 2022. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Going into our call to the public, this is our first call to the public for this evening. Call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for a discussion and legal action. I can see online and I see in person. Ms. Garcia, do we have anybody who has submitted a motion to speak at this time?
I do not have a motion to speak at this time or speaker's card. If we just give two seconds for someone to ask to speak online. Just raise your hand if you're online. There seems to be no one who would like to speak tonight, Mayor.
All right, well, thank you so much. We will have a second call to the public at the close of the meeting, and you are welcome at that time. Closing the first call to the public, we're going to move on to public hearings and presentations.
We did acknowledge a silent roll call with all members present.
So, we had a roll call. All members are present and noted.
I said, "We did acknowledge a silent roll call with all members present."
All right, thank you guys so much for being here this evening. Tonight, we have many special items on our agenda for presentation and recognition. A night that is very sacred in our hometown is when our youth enlist in military. This is something that we are very thankful of as a community. We want all of the families and the individuals who are enlisting to know that we are here to support you, and we are looking forward to your return and celebrating you every step of the way. We have a proclamation tonight I'm going to share, and then I'm going to call down our council, as well as, we have a school board member in the audience, Roger Beatty. If you just want to give everybody a wave. And he's going to be joining us as well to present our local youth with a special proclamation of their own. And the recruiter, yes ma'am. And we do want to say thank you to the recruiters who are here this evening, especially knowing how special it is to our Florence High School students. Supporting youth enlisting in the armed forces. Whereas men and women join the military in part because of the benefits the military offers, but more importantly, they join the military and put their lives on the line so the rest of us might live in a safer, freer, more just world. And whereas Matthew Morozik... Please correct me, where is Matthew? Matthew, am I saying your name correctly? Can you please? Hey, you know what? I love that you're not afraid to correct me. And I want you to know, I also serve as an assistant principal, and I have to practice at our eighth grade promotion sometimes with all of our students. Can you say your last name for me?
Morozik.
Morozik. I learned quickly. Matthew Morozik, Kaylee Everson Ivenson, and I taught her sister, Jacob Petrick, Jada Louis Roberts, and Robert Stanford, have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by enlisting in the armed forces. Each will take an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and is ready to stand and defend our great country with honor, courage, and commitment so that we may enjoy the freedom that is afforded to each of us. And whereas our military personnel defend us in times of peace, times of war, times of crisis, both natural and man-made, and render the highest service any American can offer, and is the guardian of freedom and the American way of life. And whereas we are profoundly grateful for the sacrifice that they have chosen to offer each of us, and because of their heroism, we are able to sleep soundly at night knowing that they are valiantly guarding our freedom. And whereas we must also remain committed to support our men and women who have grown up in our community and are part of our communal family in order to ensure that they have what they need to complete their missions, wherever that may be. We must also commit to support the families they leave behind and support them when they return home. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Tara Walter, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim Florence's pride and those who have chosen to enlist, and I urge all citizens to continue supporting our military service personnel and the families who are here waiting for their return. Let's give them a round of applause and call them up. Counsel, if you would like to come down. And Roger Beatty, if you would like to come up. I remember some of these names from Little League. It's been a few years since I've seen them. All right, Robert Stanford, come on up. I had to get our adults organized. Why did you choose to enlist? It's all on and ready for you to go.
Um, how close do I have to have the microphone?
Like, right here.
Well, I chose to enlist because after high school, I didn't have much to do. I didn't really have a plan, so I thought, what better than to serve my country in the best way that I can? So, honestly, I'm excited to see where this leads.
Staff Sergeant, can you come up? Yes, please, when your recruit comes up, if you could please join them so that way we could have you here as well. Staff Sergeant, would you like to say a few words?
I got this. Hi, you guys, this is Random. But I am super proud of this young man, and I'm excited for him to be on a journey to be my future brother in arms. Of course, he's, you know, joining the best of the best, which is the Marines. So, he said he want to serve his country in the best way possible, so he joined the best branch. But this is an amazing young man. He's excited to be the first and to do something with his life. He didn't want to be average, he wanted to be something. He didn't want to depend on his family. He felt like they've done what they needed to do, and so now he want to do them justice. And I'm so proud of him, I'm so excited, even more excited to see him when he shave off, off of his hair. Off of his hair, you know? But yeah, I'm proud to be his representative, his big sister, because I'm one of his behind, and I can't wait to see his journey as well. So, thank you all for his support, for the support in general, and I hope you guys did understand me because I do have an accent, so.
Our next honoree this evening? Jada Louis Roberts. Let's give her a round of applause. And if her recruit is here this evening, if you would like to come forward as well? Would you like to say a few words about why you enlisted?
I originally planned to go to college, but my mom saw it was in best interest for me to go to the Navy. She said I needed some structure, so. It's best if I go to the Navy, but I also think it'd be a lot of fun. I chose air crewman, so I'm excited.
Okay, here's the test. Our next honoree is Matthew Morozik. Matthew, would you like to share with us why you enlisted?
I think it's the best thing you can do to start out your life and just get everything started. The benefits are insane, you know? Medical, everything like that. And I got to meet him.
Would you like to share a few words?
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. My name is Staff Sergeant McKay. And Matthew here, I can't speak enough about how great of a young man young Matthew over here is. To be in the Army, you have to live by seven values. The one that speaks the most to me with Matthew is integrity. You know, every day, he's putting in the work to become a better him. And like I said, you can't beat that. He truly is a great young man. I know he's going to do great things in the Army.
Our next honoree is Jacob Petrick. And is your recruiter here this evening? Okay.
Well, I never really had a plan to go to college because I didn't want to go to school all these years just to go in debt to go back. I don't really know of anybody in my family that did Navy, and I knew I wanted to make a huge change and be something bigger than myself, so, thought, why not?
And Kaylee Everson, will you come on up? Is your recruiter here this evening? Are you Navy? It's okay, we have a good group going to all branches. Would you like to share why you enlisted?
Well, if I were to share why I enlisted, I'd probably talk for a very long time because it was a roller coaster of decision-making. Hawaii didn't work out, so. But I can say that, growing up, I kind of always had a gut feeling that I was supposed to do something to make a difference in the world, and I think that this is it, so.
Let's give all our young men and women a round of applause. Next, I would like to invite Chief Wallsup for a recognition of Officer Emma Grahada for creating safer, stronger, and better communities. I'm used to her maiden name when she was little and in school. Then she went off and became a mama.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'd be remiss if I didn't say something here real quick, and that is to my brothers and sisters who choose to go ahead and wear that uniform every single day in service of their country. I'm absolutely proud of you, and it is my honor to go ahead and be standing amongst you today. I'm retired Air Force 20 years. Thank you for your service. Counsel, I would be remiss if I didn't tell you how proud I am each and every day of the men and women who work for the Florence Police Department. But tonight, we recognize Officer Emma Grahada. She has embodied what our mission statement is all about, and that's serving you, you meaning the community, with respect, compassion, and trust. And she does that every single day. It's not just that one contact that we have with the community. It's the follow-up. That's what builds trust and legitimacy with the police and our community. And last month, Emma was given that award by the county attorney for the dedication that she does. I have to tell you, it wasn't surprising to me this morning. I came in and I had a recognition that was submitted online. And guess who it was for? It was for Emma. And this particular person said, "Chief, I just wanted to go ahead and let you know that this young lady did an outstanding job with my son, and it just wasn't the first contact. She came back to go ahead and see how this young man was doing." That's what we're all about. It's not just that one touch, it's that continual touch with our community, to go ahead and make sure that we're trusted agents within our community, and that's what Emma is. A lot of times, I get credit for things that I don't do, so I'd like to go ahead and invite Frank up, the mayor, and the town manager to come up and give this award to Emma because you all truly have embodied this for her and have helped mentor her. And guess what, folks? She's only got 10 months in. Imagine what she's going to go ahead and be. So for the year, she tells me she's going to take my job.
Hi, my name's Officer Grahada. I just go to work every day wanting to be the officer that I had when I was younger. Sorry, that came out of nowhere. Did not plan on doing that. My job is incredibly fun. I get to reach people who don't really call the cops on a good day, so. I don't know where this is coming from. I apologize. This is great. My job is great. Thank you so much.
So, Chief, before you sit down, our third item is a very special presentation, and we have some really talented artists in our community. Would you help me with this? It's the recognition of the Second Annual Youth Art Contest winners. Would you like to share a little?
I would. So, once again, often, we're in the community, and one of the first things that we hear is when our parents around some of our kids are saying, "That police officer over there, if you're not good, he's going to go ahead and arrest you." That's not what we want to go ahead and be. We want to be a resource that our kids know our service for help. We want them to look at us as the good guys. This art program, second year in, has designated to go ahead and do that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to David, our staff support services manager.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, everybody. I've been with the Florence Police since January of this year. It's been a great time, and I enjoy being there. Chief has made it a real good example for me because the first thing that we did, almost the first month I was there, was going to the schools, start working with the kids, start to break down those barriers of seeing us as the bad guys that put people in jail. And actually, we want them to see us as a friend and as a resource to help. So with that, I was excited to be able to be a part of this art program where we went to the three different elementary schools here in town and provided them an opportunity to draw themselves being a partner with law enforcement, which is what we're trying to build. So with that, I want to bring up the second place winners for the second grade, Wyatt Downs. Want to bring down second place for fifth grade, Brooklyn Baltiera. We want to recognize second place for sixth grade, Blake McCormick. And if we can bring down the first place winners for second grade, Declan Brennan. First place for fifth grade, Tessa Rainwater. And first place for seventh grade, Amelia Medina. So before we let you guys go, a gracious donor from the community for first place wanted to provide you guys with a $50 gift card that you guys can use at any store or restaurant. Congratulations, good job, guys.
Let's give those amazing artists one last round of applause. Ms. Debbie Frias, can we have you come on up here for a moment, please? All right, Debbie, how are you today? I'm good, all right. So Debbie is our employee of the month. We have a very special program here in the town of Florence, and the employee of the month is nominated by their peers. And there is an employee incentive committee that goes through. Can I just have somebody shut that door? Thank you so much, I appreciate it. I love it when people visit, but I want to make sure that we can appreciate and honor you as well. With this award also comes a $75 gift card to any business in town that you'd want. So you just have to let Mrs. Lisa Garcia know, and she will arrange that for you. So I want to share the letter that was written and your support. I would like to nominate Debbie Frias for the following categories: Superior Customer Service. Service, Professionalism, Teamwork. It is a pleasure to work with Debbie. She is consistently doing things to help ease the burdens on her teammate, such as helping to get cash receiving up and running at 8:00 a.m., even when she is not the one responsible for opening that day. By catching up the customer change forms and soft balancing the checks and stubs, so the next person doesn't struggle to balance at the end of their shift. She answers the phone when the person up front is busy with customers on another call, even when it's not her week for the front desk. Debbie does everything she can to lighten the load for the next person to take over the desk. She makes it a point to check throughout the day to see if there is anything that she can do to help. I have learned so much from watching and listening to Debbie perform her daily duties. She has a beautiful calmness about her that seems to soothe upset customers and makes everything all right. She is always polite, even when faced with rude, angry people on the other side of the glass, on the phone, or in the office. She is a wonderful role model for what superior customer service looks like, and I highly recommend her for this award. Debbie, we're grateful and appreciative for your service in the town of Florence. Would you like to share a little bit as well?
Thank you. So 23 years have gone by very quickly, and I appreciate who I work with and the things I do. I can remember the first week I was here, wanting my desk to look like others with paper and their files while I'll be careful what you wish for. But I love my job and what I do, and it's a new day every day with customers, good, bad, and in between. So I appreciate the people I work with, and council, and Lisa, and a lot of my peers that I work with over the years. Thank you.
Oh, he wants us centered. 23 years. It does, doesn't it? Especially when you love what you're doing.
Yes, I agree.
Next, I would like to call Ms. Allison Fleez up. She has a very special presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. I'm very honored and proud to be in front of you tonight to celebrate and recognize Victoria Iningas for all of her hard work that she has put forth to earn her bachelor's degree in Parks and Recreation Management. Victoria has been employed with the town of Florence as Recreation Leader since February of 2018. When she first started with the Recreation Division, she was pursuing a degree in Family Studies and Human Development. After one year working within the department, Victoria found her love for Parks and Recreation and decided to switch majors. This past January, Victoria began her internship with the town, which came at a great time as one of our Recreation Coordinators was out on an extended leave. During her internship, Victoria ran our T-ball program, assisted with special events, and got the ball rolling on our youth soccer league, which had the most participants that the program has ever seen. Victoria is also working on bringing the Missoula Children's Theater a week-long children's theater program to town this summer. On May 7th, Victoria walked across the stage at Northern Arizona University, where she received her bachelor's degree in Parks and Recreation Management. We are very proud of all the work, all the hard work and dedication that Victoria has shown to our organization, and know she will accomplish great things moving forward. No matter where Victoria's road takes her, she will... Sorry, Victoria, I should have called you up here a long time ago, if you want to come on up. Come on up, Victoria. She will always be able to say that Florence is where her love for Parks and Recreation began, and we are honored that she chose to work and learn with us here in the town of Florence.
Yeah. I just want to thank the Town of Florence Community Service Department for allowing me to do my internship. During my time, I learned from a lot of incredible people. They have a great team on staff, and just seeing their work ethic and seeing how dedicated they were into Parks and Rec made me realize that I too want to do that, so just want to say thank you.
Next up, we have a public hearing on Resolution Number 1823-22, and for discussion, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Common Council of the Town of Florence, Arizona, approving the Town of Florence General Plan 2022: Our Town, Our Future. At this time, I'd like to call forward Mr. Larry Harmer.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This has been quite a while coming. We've put in a lot of time and effort into this project. We've been very proud of the efforts put into by our consultant, by our staff, by our community in bringing this document forward. I will give you just a brief background, and we do have our consultant here to give you the perfunctory, unfortunately, because you've all seen it before in one form or another, presentation. The general plan by state statute in every community must be updated every 10 years, and we did indeed start our process at that 10-year increment, and are hopefully going to be next to the last step tonight. The last step being, of course, the ratification in November at a election of the general population, voting population of the town of Florence. This has been an effort that has been a lot of education involved, because we've taken a rather unique approach. It's been done other places, but not often, and that is to create a general plan that actually is indeed general. Anyone can take our current general plan map, for example, and overlay our zoning map, and you just see basically the same document over and over, and you'll see that in communities all across Arizona and indeed across the country. We try to take a much different approach on this one, so that it is general, so it becomes a guiding policy rather than a definitive policy that allows each individual development as it comes forward through the planning commission and the council to be weighed on its own merits. And that was the real overriding goal of this plan as we went through the update process. The staff report outlined some of the basics of the general plan and some of the different steps that are required. It also talks about the public input process that we went through, and some of the general nuances to this plan over what you have currently and what you have seen necessarily in other communities itself. We do have representative of the consultant team here to do the presentation, after which, indeed, you need to conduct a public hearing, take any input that might be from the public, and then go ahead and move and act on the adoption of the plan as you see fit at that time. Matthew, if you'd come on up, and I'm gonna go sit quietly in the audience.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's good to be back before you on this milestone moment to talk a little bit about the general plan. I know that we've gone through this conversation a few times now, and so I'm gonna try and keep my comments brief and high level, but given that this is the final public hearing, I will be giving a highlight of some of the key takeaways from the planning process, and then certainly, if there's something that I need to go back and address or comment on, please feel free to bring up any questions that you may have after we conclude our slides. One of the things I just wanted to pause on, we've seen this slide before, but this has been a multi-year effort. It's multi-phased as well in terms of how the work and product were prepared, but one of the things that I just want to emphasize on this slide beyond just going through the multi-year aspect of it, is that each phase along the way incorporated public involvement, whether that be community workshops or focus group conversations. There was direct interaction with residents throughout this effort, which obviously is very key, because as Larry mentioned, at the end of this process, we're looking to ratify the plan, so we want to make sure that we're listening to the public and incorporating feedback from them into this final document. In terms of the overall structure of the plan, we talked about how the current general plan has a vision statement, it's organized by elements that are defined by state statute, and then it's broken out into individual goals, objectives, and strategies. As we updated the plan, we maintained the foundation of that effort, i.e., we maintained the vision statement largely as it is, we preserved the elements and elective elements that the current general plan utilizes, but we also reworked the organization of the plan to make it more universal and cross-cutting. And that is a focus on the seven universal goals. So instead of 28 individual goals that the current general plan has that are all individual and focused amongst themselves, these universal goals are carried on throughout the general plan and really focus on trying to emphasize these aspects of the community in everything that the town does, as opposed to just applying specific goals to specific topics. These goals are intended to be achieved as the town moves forward on the various efforts that it undertakes, not just specific to any one subject matter. Within the actual organization of the plan, I mentioned that there's specific state-required elements or topics that the plan must address, and there's also elective elements that the town identified on its own that is important to the community and thus are also included in the plan itself. So what you see on the screen here are the different chapters in indicating our town, our future, we have our community, our infrastructure, and our prosperity. And within each one of those chapters, you see the various elements that are included and the policies associated with those. And so you can see that amongst all of those different elements or topics and the policies that go along with that, I think the town is in good hands in terms of a guiding document to help decision-makers like the council and others guide the community as growth continues within Florence and the county overall. One of the things that Larry mentioned is a big component of the general plan is the land use plan itself, and one of the takeaways that we focused on this effort was updating the general land use plan and simplifying it in the sense of creating place types. Instead of applying specific land uses that then are directly related to zoning districts and not really having much variation from the land use plan and the zoning map, this new place type approach identifies what the desired look and character of specific areas are, as opposed to the specific land uses, and thus gives flexibility within the town to address changes that occur through the growth of the community and allows the plan to respond to those without impacting the overall development quality of the community, but also the administration of the general plan itself. So within those place types, we're identifying that different land uses can be placed within each of those place types, but in order to ensure that we still maintain protections against mitigating some of the impacts that may come with the various land uses that are allowed within each place type, you'll see that we also expanded the development policies within each of those. And so there's very key direction and guidance within each place type to ensure that we're not creating situations where we're advocating or encouraging situations where we have undesired impacts to existing land uses. So we have a lot of attention that was put on specific policies to help guide locating land uses within each place type to make sure that we're not creating any unintended consequences in terms of placement of specific land uses. The other component that I wanted to pause on is water. Certainly, water was a very big discussion as part of the general plan. Kudos to the town for also conducting a water sustainability effort that is a compendium effort to this general plan, and so we took components of that larger effort and incorporated it into the general plan as well. And so as part of state statute, it specifies that a general plan must identify the water demand that the town currently has, the projected demand that the town will need, and how the town is gonna go about getting any additional water resources that are needed to make up that difference. And the simple takeaway from this table is that you'll see in the far-right column that through the analysis of utilizing MAGG's 2055 population estimate for the town, that there is no need for additional water resources to support that projected population out to 2055. So what that tells us is that the town is in good shape from a water standpoint and has the ability now to methodically and strategically look about growing its water portfolio over the next few or few years or decades without this pressure of knowing that we need additional water resources. So the town can be very selective and strategic in how it goes about acquiring additional water resources to even help with supporting growth of the town beyond 2055. Now, the last item that I would comment on is implementation. So one of the things the current general plan does not have is an action or implementation section. So we have a lot of great goals and objectives and strategies, but identifying how or what we can do to carry those out was something that was discussed in many of our council work sessions, and so the council shared that we would like this roadmap to show what are some steps we can do, who's responsible for those efforts, and when should they be conducted. And so that conversation led to the creation of this more robust implementation table that identifies various efforts that the town can undertake in order to carry out some of the goals and policies that are listed within the plan itself. Now, as far as tonight's discussion, there's a few things that we did want to bring to your attention. Since the public draft of the general plan was shared for review, there were specific modifications that were identified through the Planning and Zoning Commission discussions, and so I wanted to walk council through those. Some were just minor text edits that needed to be revised, and others were specific requests from the commission that they felt would help... from the commission that they felt would help clarify or improve the plan. So one of the first edits that was recommended by the planning commission was on page 28, "To add medium to high-density residential along with applicable zoning districts may be considered as buffer between single-family residential and existing neighborhood commercial use in the suburban neighborhood place type." Simply put, adding this specific language in this suburban neighborhood place type gives greater flexibility within that character area to provide transitional land use options when we're looking at addressing the nuances of development relationships within this most prevalent place type within the community. So we can imagine that when the suburban neighborhood place type, which is the predominant place type within the general plan, goes through the development process, there could be situations within that place type that require incorporating this medium to high-density residential to help mitigate or buffer specific commercial uses with lower-density residential uses. The other aspect we looked at was, well, and this actually just clarifies where that specific change would be found or included. The other aspect was a modification to the text on page 29 under the suburban neighborhood place type to revise the bullet point number seven to read, "No neighborhood commercial development shall individually exceed 25 acres." There was a text edit there that you'll see in the picture on the screen that actually identified 15 acres when it should be 25 acres. Also, there was a footnote that was a carryover from the existing general plan that now we're incorporating these place types needed to be striked, and that's footnote five in table 18. Another comment from the planning commission is within the general plan itself, we have two tables that talk about population projections. It was identified that in these tables, they specifically identify the population projections for the municipal limits of the town. So when we were looking at the water resources section, we were looking at the planning area. So that's a higher, right, population projection. But because this section is actually comparing to other communities within Pinnell County, we needed to compare apples to apples. So those projections for those communities are provided for their municipal limits. So we wanted to show that Florence population projections are for the municipal limits as well. And so there was just a footnote that the planning commission wanted to clarify. To ensure consistent comparison amongst data from different sources, the information presented in this figure reflects the projected population for the municipal limits of Florence and identified benchmark communities as opposed to the planning area itself. And then again, the table two on the same page was, has the same footnote. And then it was requested that the last sentence of the second paragraph on water resources, the commission just felt that it's still, we made some revisions, but that it still wasn't reading right, so took a third try at that, and the commission liked the revised language that stated, "Such a plan can also efficiently and effectively manage the reuse of water to provide greater resilience against environmental impacts." And so with that, really, as Larry mentioned, the next step, if we proceed with a recommendation of approval tonight, would be putting the plan on the ballot for voter ratification in November. And with that, I can answer any questions, or if you would like, we can open it up to the public.
Just a couple of more points, if I might. As a wrap-up, we have also included in your packet the public comments we received during the 60-day review period. Those are all available from the public, from other agencies. So far, everything has been very positive. Over the last four or five months, I've had personal contact with property owners as well as residents of the community, and to a person, it has been a positive response and reaction to this draft plan at this point. And another little, more of a tidbit of our pride in this process, the last time that this, the council in Florence adopted a general plan, the resolution you saw here has six bullet points that Matthew has just elaborated on. The last time it happened, there were multiple pages of tweaks that had to occur. So that's one of the things that we're very proud of in this plan, is it is very cohesive and understandable, and, you know, we'd like to see it move forward. Public hearing is next.
Thank you. Well, I felt the process was very open, transparent, and definitely fostered collaboration and public input and participation. I appreciated you including the notes, and I also saw some of those changes reflected in the presentation as well. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. I do have one request to speak at this time. I have a Jennifer R., because I can't, I apologize. I want to make sure that I say it correctly.
I've got terrible handwriting. Is that what you're telling me, Mayor?
Absolutely not. I would never say that. How are you this evening?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you for the time this evening. My name is Jennifer Ruby. Our address for the record is 2738 East Guadalupe Road in Gilbert, Arizona, 85234. I'm still memorizing it. I'm here representing Langley Properties and the Langley-Collmena Ownership Group. And I have to tell you, I've attended a lot of public hearings in my career, and I have never teared up at a public hearing. Watching, being here tonight, watching the way you honor your youth, your law enforcement, and your valued employees, really, it was very moving for me, and I'm so grateful that I was here for that. I had specific bullet points prepared to make comments about the general plan, and sitting here tonight, it occurs to me that there's something much more important to say about it. This general plan, I come from a development perspective. So of course, we look at land use, we look at development restrictions, what that's going to do to development over time. But I think what's more important about this general plan are the community focuses that are involved. You even have a goal, and I'm not going to be able to quote it, but it has to do with enhancing the quality of life and the general well-being of your community. And there's nothing that could evidence that for me better than what I witnessed here tonight. It was, it was really an incredible evening. So with that, I would like to express gratitude to not only your leadership, but also staff's efforts, your consultants' efforts. There was a robust public process. It was a joy to participate in and be a part of. I learned a lot and was able to contribute, I feel like, in a way that really hopefully will make a difference over time. So thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there anybody else in the public or online that would like to speak at this time? If you're online, go ahead and click your handprint. And Mr. Maldonado, come on up, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Commander Maldonado from the American Legion here at Post 9. I just want to send a formal invite out to the Town Council and the mayor. On May 30th, Memorial Day, we're going to be putting flags out at the cemetery at 0700 hours. So everybody's formally invited, and also for the town, I think, in years past, the fire department showed up and some, and some of law enforcement also showed up. So you guys are more than invited if work allows it. So afterwards, we're going to be having breakfast at the post, pancakes and sausage for those that helped out. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commander. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on the plan at this time? It's okay. It's absolutely okay. No worries. All right. I do not see anybody online or anybody else in person. I am going to go ahead and close this public hearing. Council, are there any questions or comments that you'd like to go on record with? Councilmember Hughes?
On the population, the 2020, it's got 29,100. Lisa, is that an accurate number for 2020?
That would not be our current census number, so I will defer to the consultant.
And you're referring, I'm sorry, you're referring to...
When you said the commission wanted to do, it was on the population. And you had 2020, it being, Florence was 29,1, and we're not 29,1 right now.
I'd have to, so your question is regarding the population shown for, on table two?
It was...
Whoops, PowerPoint.
Okay, thanks. I have to go all the way back. It was in what you said the commission had changed a few things, and it was on the population about just the district.
It looks like it was on page 12.
On page 12. And it has the...
Yes, so...
It's 29,100, and I don't, I'm just questioning the accuracy of that number.
It's page 40 of our packet.
Page 40 of our packet.
And so these numbers, this 2020 Florence was actually pulled from the MAG's socioeconomic projections, not the specific census information. So MAG's projections at the time of creating this table had identified the population is 29,100. So it's not reflecting the census data because that data at the time of preparing this portion of the plan hadn't been released yet for the 2020 census. So if we wanted to update that number, we could make that as part of the motion.
I think it's important to give accurate numbers now that we have them.
Yeah, we'll be happy to do that. Good, good comment.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion. We adopt resolution number 1823-22 with amendment for the population to be corrected.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Then that motion carries. Thank you. Item G is presentation by the Pinnell County Water Augmentation Authority. At this time, Councilmember Hughes, would you like to give an introduction?
One of the reasons I think it was wonderful that we're bringing up this resource is that it was right after the general plan, and the general plan having a whole water resource, and how important that resource, that section of our town, how important it is to our growth. So it's, being in Pinnell County in this region, Florence can't depend on one single water source. We have to work hard to develop public and private partnerships, to work with regional resources, to create a diverse water portfolio that ensures our ongoing growth and sustainability for Florence, being a thriving town even in the midst of drought and scarcity. So at this time, I would like to introduce you to one of these valuable resources. I'm calling up Bill Collins, the chairman, and Joe Singleton, executive director of the Pinnell County Water Augmentation Authority.
Thank you, council. I am the chairman of the Pinnell County Water Augmentation Authority, and with me tonight is Jill Singleton, our executive director. And he is our numbers person, as it were, extensive background previously with the Department of Water Resources as a Pinnell AMA director. I'm afraid as loud as I can get this time of night. I'm sorry. But I will go ahead and let Joe go ahead and take care of this presentation. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council people, thank you. Chairman Collins, thank you. For the record, my name is Joe Singleton. I live at 757 South Alamo in Mesa, Arizona, 85204. As my chairman has said, I am the executive director of the Pinnell County Water Augmentation Authority. I have been for about the last 12 years. Previous to that, I spent about 12 years working for the State Department of Water Resources, mostly down here in the Pinnell Active Management Area, and ended my time with the department as the area director. So tonight, at Mrs. Hughes' invitation, I have the opportunity to just let you guys know a little about us and what we've been up to lately, because although a lot of it was through Zoom and Teams, we actually were engaged in stuff. So for those of you that don't know so much about us, we were formed in statute in the 90s, consisting of cities, towns, irrigation districts, and special tasking districts in our area. This was going on around the same time that the state was looking to form the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District and start to tackle some of the issues of groundwater use, particularly in the central AMAs, which is considered to be ourselves and then Phoenix to our north and Tucson to our south. In terms of financing, we can issue revenue bonds, but we don't have fixed funding sources other than being allowed to ask the Department of Water Resources for up to $200,000 a year that comes out of, comes out of our area's pump tax money. And that's important because due to the lack of a defined revenue stream, the board voted years ago to annually assess its members to generate some additional funds so that they can hire staff, because at the time this had happened, they had no permanent staff, me now and my predecessor before me. And as our board is volunteers, made up of folks like Councilmember Hughes and before her, Councilmember Anderson, these are volunteers with their own, with their own jobs or several other jobs in certain cases, and they, our board at the time made the decision in order to further their goals and objectives that they were going to need full-time people working on it, which I am fortunate enough to be one now. In the time since we were formed, one of the activities that we did engage in was incentivizing the storage of municipal CAP water in our region by paying for portions of the Florence and Eloy MNI allocations. So it's gratifying to me to see that that water was included in your general plan and that the idea for its long-term uses is back here at home. So over the last couple of years, we updated our own strategic plan to look at issues of our own statutory objectives, finance and augmentation. Retained the services of a lobbyist to represent us on water issues, because much like some of the policy stuff may require a full-time person, me right now, the lobbying required somebody that basically was spending their days down on Washington, developing those relationships with those elected officials in order to be effective. So for the last several years, we have done that, both to promote our own legislation and other regional legislation like that, that the stakeholders, Pinnell County stakeholders have run down here that came out of the Legislative Ad-Hoc Group. One of the successes that they've been able to achieve so far is actually guaranteeing the amount of groundwater that is in your designation. Because although the state has said that they don't necessarily believe it's physically all there, that legislation implies that you can continue to rely on it, at least up until that amount, which was also reflective in your plan. So I think that's good for all of us. We pursued our own legislative and policy changes with the statutes and DWR practices. The big one has been what they said about the Assured Water Supply Program down here in 2019, where they said that we don't have enough groundwater and storage to continue to grow. And the folks that are trying to develop without the benefit of a system that has a designation of assured water supply like yours does have been told no. They've been getting told no for five or six years now, and those projects aren't moving anywhere. Obviously, this is of great concern to folks in other communities that aren't designated and would like to continue to try to grow. We have also engaged a professional review and analysis of that decision the department made with, with that decision, and take a look at their wellfield data, their groundwater... at their well field data, their groundwater model, and contributed to the stakeholder effort to modify DWR's position on that. I think we've probably spent going on six figures engaging in hydro work to go look at the well field, simulate deepening it, moving wells in ways that might be allowed under current law, in order to address the groundwater deficit that the state says is there that will not allow any of these other projects to move. So that is what we have been engaged in and attempting to accomplish over the last several years. I would be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for being here, counsel. What questions do you have or comments? Councilmember Anderson?
Well, I'd like to thank Joe and Bill for coming tonight and remind the council and the public that if it weren't for what the work that the augmentation group has done for us, they've protected the Pinal County water supply because our neighbors to the north have tried to take advantage of us. Is that saying it nice? Okay. So they have constantly done battle to keep our water allotments to what they should be, or what we would like for them to be, I guess. Anyway, I just want to thank them for what they've done here tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Walter, Mr. Anderson, thank you.
Councilmember Hughes?
One of the things I would like to do is, we talked at our budget meeting prior last month or last week, that there is, the membership has been, the dues for the Pinal County Water Augmentation Authority, Florence has backed away and decided not to pay the membership for five, six years. I'm not really quite sure how long. John, do you know how long? They've not...
I believe it's four or five.
Four, okay. And with, we have, we have the, some funds in the council contingency, and I was, I was hoping to ask that we could use the $20,000 and renew our resource and for membership with that council fund for this year and next year.
We could add that item to the next meeting, because the council action item did say possible action, but the agenda does only say presentation. So if council wants us to add it to the next meeting, we could add it to consent on the next meeting.
Can I ask for just one clarification, Ms. Jimenez? How much do we have in our council contingency remaining?
I would, I would have to look that up. I don't, right off the top of my head, I've been working with a lot of budget numbers, and I can't recall that amount. I think Lisa keeps track of that.
Yeah, you have about $46,000 remaining.
Okay. I was just recalling from the last meeting, and I remembered somewhere between, like, 20 was the normal dues, but we had stepped back a few years ago just because of, you know, the funding. And then you had said five, but if we have the 20, then that can come before council. That's fine.
I was under the assumption that what we were going to do is pay for our next fiscal year dues. Is that not correct?
Right. On this, on this, this budget for next year, correct?
It's not allowed?
No?
You have to, you can't prepay dues like that.
It'd be the '22, '23?
Yes. We can do that after July 1.
Okay. So can I make a motion to put, ask to put it on the next agenda under the consent item?
I support that.
All right, we'll add it there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item is a presentation and discuss it. Yeah, my goodness gracious, Mr. Graves. Presentation and discussion regarding the town's community outreach presentation for the upcoming permanent base adjustment election, August 2, 2022.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'll be walking through the permanent base adjustment presentation we'll be sharing with our residents at a number of voter education events in June. We plan on posting a recorded version of this presentation to our website and sharing to our social media so we can get this information out before early voting begins in July. With that, I'll get into the presentation. Once I wrap up, please share any comments or feedbacks you have so we can continue to refine these information and resources we'll be sharing with our community on the permanent base adjustment. Before getting into some of the background and history on this topic, I'd like to start with some quick facts on the town's proposed permanent base adjustment, also known as Proposition 459. First, if our proposition is approved this August, it would not raise existing taxes or impose any new or additional taxes or fees on Florence residents. Also, Prop 459 does not allow the town to spend more than it receives in revenue. What Prop 459 will do is enhance our local control over the town's annual budget so we can meet our community's needs over the long term, instead of operating on our current state spending limit. All right. Second, if Proposition 459 is approved, the town's budget will continue to be subject to significant review and oversight, and residents will continue to have options to share their feedback and participate in the annual budget process. For example, the town holds multiple public hearings on the budget and annual property tax levy each year in June, and this year's hearings are going to be on June 20th, if anyone is interested and would like to attend. Third, in terms of our quick facts, in order to increase your state spending limit, cities and towns have two main options. First, there's the home rule option, where you can ask your voters to temporarily suspend your limit for four years at a time. That takes reauthorization every four years from the voters. Or you can ask voters to approve a permanent base adjustment, which permanently increases the state formula used to set the town's spending cap each year. Looking at cities and towns, are there on home rule or permanent base adjustment? Years ago, about 70% were on home rule. More recently, in 2018, those are the blue lines there. You could see it was about 65, 35, 65% on home rule and 35% on permanent base adjustment. And today, it's right around split. It's about 50/50. So permanent base, the permanent base adjustment option is becoming the best practice for cities and towns in Arizona. Okay, with some quick facts under our belt, I'd like to touch on some of the background and challenges we're experiencing with our current expenditure limit. But first, what is our expenditure limit? So in 1979, 1980, expenditure limits were established for all Arizona cities and towns by the state legislature. These limits are adjusted each year based on inflation and population trends in the area, and our local spending cap can only be, permanently be adjusted by our voters. In 1979, our original expenditure limit was 711,000. In 2018, Florence voters approved a permanent base adjustment to increase our base limit to 1.1 million. So that's what we are operating under currently, a permanent base adjustment from about four years ago. We are not operating under home rule at present, and we don't have plans to go back to home rule. So just want to make that clarification. Because the elections are four years apart, that's been the source of some confusion. So if approved this August, Proposition 459 would further increase the limit approved by our voters by an additional $3.8 million. And so I highlight that figure and not our new base of 5 million, because that's the question voters will be asked on August 2. Do you wish to increase Florence's base limit by $3.8 million? So that's the key figure here. Okay, so looking at those values, you might be wondering, how does this actually influence our current and projected budget? So on the left, we have our current base limit of 1.1 million. That was the limit increased by our voters in 2018. According to the state formula, you can multiply that figure by our inflation and population adjustments, and you get our state imposed limit for next fiscal year. So not the fiscal year beginning this July, but July of 2023. And so under our current limit, in terms of what we can fit in the budget, really, we can only accommodate the most critical costs, projects or programs, as you're all familiar. We went through the Budget Committee a couple, about a week ago. So we have little room for emergencies or large unforeseen expenses, not the best, not the best position to be in. We can't really weather any large unexpected costs. So not the place we want to be in currently in terms of our budget. On the right, we have our proposed spending, our proposed base limit under Prop 459, that 5 million I mentioned. If approved, our new base limit would be 5 million, and our new spending cap would be 141 million. And this just reflects our new ceiling when it comes to spending. You know, our budget isn't going to increase to that level overnight. It's going to take, it's going to be a gradual process, and our budget will increase over time as our revenues increase. And that's the key point here. Increasing our limit would enhance our local control and allow us to set a balanced budget that, where we could grow with our revenues over time, which is not possible under our current limit, because the town is out of spending capacity, as you're familiar with. So even if our revenues increase, our spending on our projects or services for our citizens is relatively fixed where we're at currently. For this reason, we've had to increase our reliance on grants, loans, and bonds over the last few years, because such items are not counted towards our expenditure limit. For example, I know council is familiar, last year, we had to take out a loan to buy a new fire truck, even though we had the cash on hand. And so those are interest costs that we could have avoided if we had a higher limit at the time. And with rates on the rise, in order to combat inflation, borrowing costs are only going to be increasing. It's going to make less sense in the years ahead. So that's a key challenge that we're experiencing currently. Next up, in terms of challenges with our expenditure limit, we do know that we have some undermarket salary levels at present, and that is increasing turnover in our staff. Speaking with finance, we estimate some of the new cost to hire and train some of the staff members we've lost over the last few years range in the area of 750,000 to 1 million. Turnover is extremely expensive, and estimates range from six to nine months to even a year's worth of salary in order to get that new person in place and get their productivity level up. And so that's been a significant challenge for us. And then in terms of infrastructure, we've had to delay millions in utility and transportation projects. And so that not only affects project schedules this year, but five and 10 years out. So we don't want to continue to get behind, and so that's another reason that we, that we need to increase our limit at present. Okay, so what does approving Prop 459 mean to our voters? So as I mentioned, it would mean less borrowing, less of those interest costs that we don't want to incur. It would help with turnover and improve service for our citizens. Less projects would be delayed on an annual basis, and we could increase our limit without having to pay the home rule election costs every four years. Every home rule election costs about $25,000. And we also, by going with the permanent base adjustment, avoid the risk of losing a home rule election, which occurred in 2014, and we had to do a number of special, one-time override votes in order to be able to adopt a budget that was suitable for our community's needs and our annual town costs. And that's not really a position that we want to deal with or be in going forward. And so, you know, fortunately, those ballot measures were successful, but if they weren't, we would have to seriously evaluate our services and our costs, because it would really reduce our annual budget. And so overall, we feel the permanent base adjustment offers lower costs and better financial management compared to home rule. So to start to recap here, on August, our voters will be asked to consider increasing the permanent base adjustment they approved in 2018. By increasing our base by $3.8 million, voters would allow the town to use the revenues and resources we already have but cannot use under our current cap. And most importantly, Prop 459 won't cost our residents a dime. In fact, it'll help the town and our residents save money and avoid any additional borrowing. With, with, so what this comes back to, excuse me, is I think local control and having the freedom and flexibility we need to provide, to build the projects and provide the services our citizens want. And that includes clean and reliable water and wastewater services, a strong and diverse local economy, and providing the top-tier public safety services that our citizens have come to expect. Those three items were the top three priorities on our, according to our citizen survey of last year, and all require significant and sustained spending, particularly on the utility projects and the public safety personnel involved. Finally, just want to again close and reminder, with Proposition 459, approving that will not increase our taxes or fees for our local residents. You know, this is really about local control, ensuring our budget can be responsive and adaptable, and assuring we're able to meet our community's needs with the revenues we already have on hand. And as I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, we'll be sharing this information with our citizens at a number of upcoming voter education events in June. We'll also be speaking to the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, to various community organizations, to various housing organizations in the community. And so if anyone is interested in having the town come out and present, speak, and answer questions on this, please reach out to me. We'd be glad to pay you guys a visit. So just to recap real quick, on June 1, we'll be doing two sessions here at Town Hall in terms of our voter education, one in the morning from 7 to 8, and one in the evening from 6 to 7. On June 15, we'll be at Fire Station 2 at the same time. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
The only question or comment I had is, I know in the past, we've been very specific with what we have to state on the record. So I know you capsized the correct amount. You captured the correct amount on the screen, but you rounded it when you verbalized it. Is that okay, Lisa? Are we okay with presenting it in that manner?
Well, the only reason why I will say yes is because it was on the screen while he was saying it, and then just rounding it up, so...
I just wanted to make sure we were okay. Checking your back.
I appreciate that.
I like the slogan.
Yeah, I think I'll make some branding, make some T-shirts.
Actually, that's a great idea. We can all go walking, and Prop 459 will cost you a dime.
There we go. I know what I'm wearing to these events now.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a, yeah, kind of a question. So it says that it's not going to raise our taxes. And so the first thing I envision is the moment raising taxes comes in front of council. And the response is going to be, but you said it wasn't going to raise taxes. So can you explain the difference between us raising taxes because costs have increased and we need to raise them to maintain a balance in the account to cover whatever versus not raising taxes to cover what this is going to cover? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, I think to answer that, I would just say that adopting this proposition, increasing our base limit, has zero effect on our local tax rates. And so if we take subsequent action for specific items, you know, that's one thing. But this action in and of itself will not increase any of our local taxes or fees. As I mentioned, it just adjusts the state formula used to set our spending cap, and so this action in and of itself has no bearing on our local taxes.
And I would just add that each year, council goes through a truth and taxation public hearing where the public has the ability to come in and speak. And whether we were in a permanent base adjustment here, or we're doing election, or whether we were not, you would do that every single year. So they, while they may appear that they're connected, they are in no way connected.
I appreciate your presentation this night, and tonight. And you know, you touched on a lot of very important facts. And something that really resonated with me is the fact that we have, I'm going to go as far as to say, not in abundance, but we have a very healthy fund balance. And unfortunately, because of our current limitations, we have to use alternative funding mechanisms for some of the infrastructure and for some of the equipment that we purchase. Obviously, anybody who's ever taken out any type of a loan or had to finance something, you have to pay back a percentage when you pay back that money. If you have the money in the bank, to be able to utilize it and not expend that additional percentage on interest is so much more of a value for our citizens, and that's ideally what we would like to be able to do. So I appreciate you putting that bullet point in, because it's, it is very critical, especially when people are talking about, you know, expending tax dollars wisely. Well, having the opportunity, and this is something that all of our citizens have control to provide, having that opportunity to be able to raise that expenditure limitation... to provide, having that opportunity to be able to raise that expenditure limitation so we can purchase it. You still have the same processes that occur where items come before council. They're always presented and everything is very open and transparent. So I just want to give a lot of kudos because with that, it takes a lot of staff time. It takes our council going through all of our agenda items and packets and asking questions and our citizens that are involved. And they come forward and they ask questions. So again, it's that, it's that triangle of partnership.
I think that's a great point. And as I mentioned, with the cost of money increasing and with Arizona growing, our state shared revenues are growing. And right now, those are just sitting on the sidelines. And it's just a shame to have to go out and get a loan when you've got money in the bank. Just doesn't make any financial sense. So I definitely agree.
I'll just add another thing. Anytime you're doing bonding or these types of excise tax loans, not only is there interest costs, there's also costs of issuance, and they're quite high. And we have to pay our bond counsel and our legal advisors for these. So on top of the interest rate, you also have those kinds of costs that factor into it.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Rodriguez?
The only point I wanted to make, sort of following up to your comment, if I may, is that we will still maintain the direction that I think all of us feel that we want to maintain a balanced budget. So it's not about draining a reserve or having money in the bank. It's about always presenting a balanced budget during our budgetary process in which the community would always have the opportunity to be involved in. So I just want to make sure that doesn't get misconstrued, that we're going to be pursuing taking funds where we haven't received that revenue that fiscal year. So I think that that was just something I wanted to point out.
All right, well, thank you so much for your presentation this evening.
Yep, and I'm not going anywhere, so.
Looking forward to attending the outreaches. Outreach speeches. All right, item seven, consent. All items on a consent agenda.
Oops, I have one more.
Oh.
It's a quick one, though.
It is, and it was so pretty, the banners. And I put a dash, like we already talked about it. Presentation and discussion regarding the town's redesigned banners for the CGI Community
Okay. So I just wanted to revisit this project because it was placed on a little bit of a hold with Ben's departure and me picking it back up. And so just for a brief recap, last September, we entered into agreement with CGI Communications to produce and install community banners in Florence over a period of three years. Originally, the agreement stated that the banners' dimensions would be two and a half feet by six feet. However, at this size, the banners could not be installed on the approximately 20 light poles located along North Main Street from Butte to Ruggles. As a result, I asked CGI to redesign the banners so they could, would conform to the pole mounts along North Main Street. I felt this would enhance their visibility and presence in the community. And so the banners' new dimensions are now two feet by just over four feet. And, and these reflect the new designs here. We've completed the business outreach phase of this project, and the four businesses displayed above have agreed to sponsor a total of 13 banners. Before approving the production of these banners over the next month, I wanted to share their final design with council to make sure everyone was still on board. They look a little different from the original concepts. You may not recall them, but, you know, because we did have to reduce their size just a little bit, you know, it did change the design just a little. And so with that, welcome any comments or questions on these final designs for our community banners.
Go ahead.
I guess I had a couple of questions. So personally, I think that, I guess I can't recall the other ones. I don't know if you have a photo of them from the previous designs. Do you happen to have those?
I don't have one, no, not right now.
Okay.
But yeah, I could definitely send it to you. And these, quick, quick context, these logos were not the final submitted logos. A few are a little lower resolution because the designer was just compiling this quickly for this, for this meeting. And so, you know, like the Florence Copper logo and the Medical Center logo, those will look much sharper and crisper in the, in the final iteration.
Okay, thank you. The question I had is I personally wish that our design was a little bit different so that that way then it wasn't so large. I feel like it's almost 50/50 of the sponsorship versus the Town of Florence. And if we, are we planning on leaving these up in a prolonged period? These are going to be up semi-permanently, correct?
Yes, the agreement spans a total of three years. And so because we had to reduce the size, I, I felt bad for, I guess regarding the original information I'd given to the sponsors. You know, the logo area was a bit bigger in the original designs for the sponsor area. We could reduce that, you know, that portion of the banner just a little bit. I believe the original agreement stated that the sponsorship area, you know, had to be a minimum of 30% of the banner size. So we could look on reducing that by five, 10%, depending on, you know, kind of the direction. And I could present some additional proofs in the future if you'd like.
Yeah, I, I think I would prefer that personally. Also, the Town of Florence logo I liked when we were looking through the process. If I remember correctly, it was branded just a little bit differently. I don't know if it was larger or placed in a different location, but I liked the way that it was branded a little bit differently. So to me, I would like to see that redesigned. That's just my personal opinion.
Okay, appreciate it. Yep, that's what I'm here, that's what I'm looking for. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Anderson?
You talked about these being on Main Street. Are you going to have any of these on Hunt Highway?
I wasn't planning on it. The, the specific size, or the size is specific to the light poles located in the historic district along Main Street. So I would need to see, you know, what, what kind of mounts are available in under other areas of the community if we wanted to put banners anywhere else.
When we did our 100th year celebration, we had poles put up all throughout all of areas of Florence.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's something that you want to pursue as well as some of those business partnerships on that north end. And when we're always talking about, you know, all areas of Florence and encompassing all areas of Florence, you know, mixing it up a little bit as well with some of the pictures and some of the businesses so that way everybody, you know, gets to know about everything we have to offer here.
Yeah, I agree. I think the agreement stated a minimum of 25 banners. So like I mentioned, we're up to about 13 or so in terms of sponsored banners. And so we could look at, you know, including the, for the additional banners, the Fire Department, Police Department, in addition to some of the sponsored ones. For example, putting the hospitals banner further north would make a lot of sense since that's their area. But also having it in the south area of town would make sense to help with the exposure. So we can, we could look at kind of spreading this out and being strategic with their location.
Same with ACE. There's some people.
Yeah.
I mean, somebody had a genius idea. I read it on social media, so take it for what it's worth. But they said, you know, Anthem at Merrill Ranch Community almost needs a turn-left campaign. Because a lot of times, you know, when you're leaving Anthem area to go to work or something, a lot of our residents, I guess, turn right. But to go left leads you into the downtown area, all of the shops and eateries. Somebody may not be aware that there's even an ACE Hardware store available.
Right, absolutely.
Go ahead.
And so in addition to the design, if you're talking about doing more banners or if there's other opportunities, personally, I like the aesthetic of them being alternated between having sponsored ones and having unsponsored ones. To me, I think it would clean up the appeal rather than having them all be sponsored. So that's just another option. I'm trying to create a cleaner design overall.
Yes, absolutely. Mixing it up so it's easy on the eyes.
I agree.
How much is the sponsorship for one of these banners?
For one banner, it's approximately, I think, 800, and it goes up from there depending on the package. There's various packages with, you know, up to, I think, one, three, five, seven, you know, there's, there's a whole range of sponsorship packages available.
And then so when you look at reducing the size of the sponsorship, of course, their agreement that, the ones that have already signed up, their agreement was for a specific size. So are we going to adjust then the amount or are we going to adjust the packets? If we're reducing the size of the sponsorship, then we also should probably look at making adjustment to the cost of the package because when a sponsor signs up, they, that's one of the first things they look at, is how much space are they buying? And if you start to reduce their space, they're going to expect you to start to reduce their cost.
If I remember correctly, didn't you say that the contract said 30% and you could reduce five to 10% and it wouldn't touch that 30% mark?
I think the minimum is 30%. And so on a larger banner, of course, it's easier to hit that mark. And so on this banner, you know, it's more, you know, 40, 45% of the banner. And so, you know, I could reach out to the sponsors and just make sure that they're comfortable with that reduction. I don't believe we have any control over the pricing packages. Those are governed by CGI, and it covers the cost to replace and install the banners. And so I don't believe we can adjust the price point, but I can do outreach just to see if it's okay if we, you know, scale that down just a little bit. And it would conform more closely with the ratios on the existing, on the original banner anyhow. So I think we would be, we would be okay.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Neal?
Just wondering what the MWP was.
Oh, I think that's Macy's Well and Pump.
All right, well, thank you so much for that presentation, and we look forward to it coming again before us, or is this just an update?
I think, yeah, I'll probably bring it one more time to lay out the final plan and let you know if any additional sponsors have joined.
All right, thank you for that. Item seven is our consent. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is authorizing an operating transfer out of the general fund in the amount of forty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. B, approval of a request to change the scope of work of WIFA Drinking Water Loan 920-316-21, removing the north system, transmission main and backup well projects, and adding the water barn, five parks, transmission line, and Adamsville Waterline projects. Item C, adoption of Resolution Number 1826-22, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement, Amendment Three, with the State of Arizona by and through the Department of Transportation, and authorizing the mayor and town to execute all documents associated therewith and taking up all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution and declaring an emergency. Item D, adoption of Resolution Number 1827-22, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the service agreement between Educational Services, Inc. and the Town of Florence, effective July 1st, 2022. Item E, adoption of the 2022-2023 Capital Improvement Plan. Item F, approval of the February 15th, 2022 council meeting minutes. Item G, receive and file the February 23rd, 2022 HSTAT Commission Meeting Minutes. Item H, accept the register of demands ending April 30th, 2022 in the amount of two million nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and sixteen cents. Is there anybody in the public or on our council that would like any item removed at this time? Okay, 7C. All right, with that, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item 7C.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item C.
Second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Councilmember Anderson, go ahead with your questions regarding item C.
My question is, it's not clear as to what the town's liability is going to be for that. Do we have, do we have to pay anything for that?
So this is an interesting story. Town council adopted, oh, the alarm thing just went off. Town council actually adopted Amendment Number Three in April. And then the state did not, did not sign off on it. So this is a replacement and it supersedes the one that was previously adopted. And this one affects the costs associated with the project. And so it is, it is an increased cost on the projects due to the materials cost increasing.
Do we know what that cost is?
What was included in your... In the RCA. So on page number two of five, it goes through the costs and in the, of what is increasing. So the town's cost is forty thousand dollars. It's the first line on page number two of five.
Well, that's not bad. Okay, thank you. I just don't want to see us paying for the whole project down there.
And Mr. Solis is online in case he has anything that he'd like to say.
I'll make a motion, we approve item 7C.
Second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eight, new business. A, discussion approval disapproval of a payment of one million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-three dollars to Public Safety Personnel Retirement System from the general fund. Approval to move budget 1.3 million capacity from Fund 11. General Government Capital Projects Fund to Fund 10. General Fund.
Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council, as we discussed in our budget session last week, we would like to go ahead and pay this public safety retirement liability off with the available funds that we have right now. We came in over revenue budget this year, and we had some savings also from our expenditures. So what we would like to do, I'm still going to run short about 1.3 million in budget, so I'd like to take that budget from the CIP fund that we did not use and move it on over and allocate into the general fund, just the allocation only, not money. So what we, I did not budget for paying off this liability because at the time we prepared budget last year, we were at our cap and I couldn't fit it in anywhere. So this liability is a debt that was incurred because of the public safety retirement system, problems that they had, and they assessed each of the communities a certain amount of money. And we were very lucky, we had always been contributing, and our liability was not as much as other communities, but we do have to pay it down. So last year, we paid 1.8 million, which paid off the police, and then we had a little bit of interest accrual at the end of the year of about seventy-five thousand dollars. So the balance of this will go all to fire. The interest on this balance accrues at 7.3%, which is a high interest rate. So doing this will alleviate the town from pain in the future, and we can do it this year because we do have excess budget capacity left over. So with that, I would like to get your approval to go ahead and pay this public safety retirement liability.
Thank you for that recap, council. Are there any questions or comments? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 8A.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council.
Thank you. Item B is discussion approval disapproval of a one-time stipend to be paid in May 2022 for all eligible employees at the maximum of five thousand dollars. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council, this, we also discussed at our budget session last week to provide the employees with a stipend again this year of five thousand dollars at the maximum amount. We did this last year because we were unable to give merit increases. We did have a, on January 1st, 2022, a 2.5 step increase that was approved for all town staff. We've developed a matrix that would apply to all of the full-time based upon how many months that they were active within the year. A scale that will provide something for everyone where last year, we only did it for full-time employees that had been here a year or more. So this, we also have included part-time allocation for those permanent part-time part-time allocation for those permanent part-time employees that are on our, on the town's payroll. They also have to be here at least three years or more in service, and we'll evaluate them on the hours that they have worked. So I've already calculated out how many staff members that would be and what their allocation would be. And again, with the excess budget capacity we had left over this year, we can afford it in this year. It'll be distributed mainly, the major portion, of course, is in the general fund. But we also have our highway user fund, water and wastewater funds that we will be taking funds from also.
Thank you. Is there anybody who has any questions or comments regarding?
With that, go ahead, Councilmember.
Question I wanted to clarify is that you said we're going to be taking wastewater funds as well as her funds?
I'm sorry, we're going to be recording their expense in those funds.
That's what I wanted to clarify. That's exactly where I was going. Thank you.
Also, I do want to make counsel aware that these monies also have retirement taken out. So the employee will still be contributing a higher amount into their retirement. And it's kind of a good thing because a lot of people, when they get a, even at a high five percent merit, will not receive five thousand dollars in addition to their wages. Whenever the retirement, when someone retires, they call down to the town to find out what their last several years of gross wages are. And that's calculated into this. So we're hoping this will kind of cushion this problem we've had by not giving ongoing merit increases. So they will still have a contribution of more money into their retirement with this five thousand dollars.
Thank you for that clarification as well. With that, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council.
Thank you. Item C, discussion approval disapproval of adding addition locations for wayfinding signs. Mr. Larry Harmer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I know it's taken longer than what we had all anticipated, but the installations are occurring. Hopefully, you've seen them already. A couple of photographs are in the staff report of the wayfinding signs and one of the entry signs. We are still waiting for ADOT to issue permits for the signs that would be within their right-of-way, west of the A and M Restaurant on Highway two-eighty-seven and on Highway seventy-nine just south of the downtown core area. The holdup there is we have, in general, is there is a new permit person in charge of our district, and they're going through this process for the first time. And so it's been an educational, we're educating them, I guess, is the polite way to do that and get it out of the way. As far as part of the delay, of course, was supply chain issues. A lot of, you know, places around the country have dealt with those. But now all materials are in our contractor's hands for even any additional signs or for the ones who are waiting for the ADOT permits. And we also, as a separate issue, if you've seen the one, I presume, coming in southbound on the Main Street Extension by the community center, that's what the other ones will look like on two-eighty-seven, on seventy-nine. But in general, they won't have quite as many panels. ADOT is very restrictive on the number of panels and what we can say on them. So you'll see a little bit of a nuanced difference in what they look like whenever we finally get the permits and get them installed. On a separate issue tied to this, we are also talking with the contractor on what it would take to modify the existing sign at the Main Street Extension at seventy-nine so that it reflects the current logo that we have and some other minor adjustments to it. And I'll be meeting with the interim town manager on that as soon as we tie down some of the cost related to that. We have enough left in the budget for three additional signs for the core area. We're open for suggestions onto where they might go, keeping in mind that Main Street, south of Butte, is ADOT right-of-way. And we will be dealing with certain restrictions there unless we reach an agreement with a private property owner to put them on private property. And that could include the school, the high school, or some other locations like that. And we're happy to pursue those if that's your wish. If you have specific ideas tonight, we'd be happy to hear it. Or if you just have thoughts over the next week or so to email myself and, you know, we'll look into every location you have. If you notice, each sign placard on the pedestrian-oriented signs in the downtown historic area are a little different because of their location. And we try to reflect what's up and downstream from each one of those and put the arrows in accordingly. So each one is a little bit different. And we've tried to spread the wealth, I suppose, is a way to put it, to make sure we acknowledge as many business types or institutions as possible on those.
Thank you. I noticed that. They look nice.
They look just like what they told us they were going to look like.
I know, it's amazing.
What a concept.
Any questions or comments? Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I have heard nothing but excitement over these signs. Every time somebody sees one that didn't notice it, which is funny, they blended in so well that people have walked by and didn't realize it was there. And then they're like, oh, my God, where'd that sign come from? So people are excited. So it looks good. Thank you for all your work.
I just wish it would have been a little shorter timeframe, but.
Yeah, it felt like we were working on it forever. But I'm sure you more so because you were in the trenches on it. All right. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve adding additional locations for the wayfinding signs.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item D is ordinance number seven-one-three dash two-two. For some reason, I thought you were staying up here for that one. It's okay. That's all right.
This is a joint project.
Yes. Seven-one-three dash two-two, which is discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Florence, Arizona, calling and ordering a special election for the purpose of submitting the Town of Florence two thousand and twenty-two general plan, "Our Town, Our Future", to the qualified electors of the Town of Florence for their approval or rejection at a special election to be held in conjunction with the general election on November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, this will, if you adopt this tonight, this will start your calendar. Tonight is actually the last night that we're able to, by law, adopt this to get it on the November ballot. So after this is adopted, we'll go ahead and we'll get out our advertisements for arguments for and against. We'll start building our publicity pamphlet, and we will start working on developing the ballot. And our proposition number is four-hundred-and-sixty.
Challenge our staff to come up with something creative like they did with four, five, and nine.
I like, I love the "Our Town, Our Future".
Yeah, I do too. Yes, all right. With no questions or comments at this time, we need a motion.
I make a motion we adopt ordinance seven-one-three dash two-two.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes. This is our second call to the public this evening. Is there anybody in the public or online that would like to speak at this time? Just go ahead and raise your hand. And if you are attending online, go ahead and click that hand button so we can see you. All right, going ahead and closing our first, or our second call to the public, this is our first call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Mendoza?
I don't have anything at this time.
Councilmember Hughes?
Nothing.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I just want to say, great meeting. I loved, I cried a couple of times. Glad I'm not the only one. Yeah, I think it was great to see everyone come out tonight and all of the great excitement to be involved and participate in all the recognition tonight was fantastic, so.
Councilmember Neal?
I just wanted to send thoughts and prayers to a very good family here in Florence, the Salia family. Lost the mother today. Extremely good family, long-time Florence family. Just praying for them all.
Councilmember Anderson?
I guess I would just like to comment on all of the inputs that we've got about the various storage facilities that are going up out in Anthem. I don't know how many emails I've received, probably fifty or so. But I do appreciate them, and I've tried to respond to them. And I want the citizens to know that we're listening to them. And just, it's good to have your inputs and to keep it up. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
First, I, because I'm not paying attention to dates, so I'm going to congratulate all graduates now so that way I don't forget later, starting from kindergarten all the way to seniors and graduating college. That's a big achievement, and so I want to congratulate them. I want to send my condolences out to everyone that was affected by the accident on seventy-nine this weekend. My thoughts are with you. And other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Everything that I was going to say was already touched upon tonight, but I just want to go back as well to the meeting and just say thank you to everybody who attended. And really celebrating our youth is something that is special and near and dear to our hearts, especially our youth that are going off into the military. So thank you for being here. Graduation night is fast and approaching, so make safe choices. The high school has an amazing program that, you know, keeps the kiddos safe. And I appreciate, you know, everything that everybody does in and for our community. We do have a few executive sessions this evening in regards to community facilities districts as well as giving direction regarding, you know, our ongoing search for the town manager position. So without further ado, our council, we need a motion to adjourn to the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District at this time.
I make a motion to adjourn to the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number one.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Can I have you call the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District to order?
I am going to.
And you have to do it before you do the joint?
Yes. I got you. Not my first rodeo. All right. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and call it to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Walter?
Here.
Vice Chair Cordis?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
Here.
Board Member Rodriguez?
Here.
Board Member Hughes?
Here.
Board Member Neal?
Here.
Board Member Mendoza?
Here.
Items, do you want me to go to item C at this time, Ms. Garcia?
You can go to the joint.
Okay. Let's, at this time, go ahead and. Okay, that's what I was going to do. All right, so discussion and possible action to approve the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number one, December sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, and March seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, special meeting minutes. If there's no questions or comments, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. At this time, we need a motion to adjourn to a joint executive session between the Florence Town Council and the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number one.
Make a motion to adjourn to a joint executive session between the Florence Town Council and the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.